I take all the order, the Shock- the School District School Board Regular Business Leading for July 28, 2025. I will note that Vice Chair Peterson will be participating remotely and the School Board will adhere to Minnesota Statute 13D dot zero two. Vice Chair Peterson will be engaged via Google Meet and included in the standard livestream. School Board members will be able to both hear and view all members, including Vice Chair Peterson during this meeting. Amber, can you please do the roll?
Zidic.
Here.
Valdez.
Here.
Peterson.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Aldrich.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Brophy.
Here.
Shawna.
Here.
Brian.
Here.
Please join in the flag of allegiance. A flag of the United States of America. To the Republic of America. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening, everybody. We will start our meeting as usual with the best part of our meeting, our Saber Pride. And here to present a video is Amber Tridic, our Communications Coordinator.
Thank you, Chair Smith. Good evening, everyone. Our Sabers packed a ton into the summer with energy, smiles, and a whole lot of learning. This highlight reel I'm about to share with you, created by our summer communications intern, Maddie Pitska, captures the spirit, growth, and fun of all the great things happening around the district in a summer we won't forget. If we truly captured all of these moments, this video would be much longer. This is just a creative snippet of news that has been shared.
Our next item on our agenda is the consideration of the agenda as presented. And I will note that since Vice Chair Peterson is participating remotely, every vote we have tonight, regardless of whether it's a normal, just straight-up voice vote or resolution, will be a roll call. With that, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda. Second, we have a motion by Aldrich and a second by Brophy. Any discussion? Seeing none, tip for Amber. Amber, can you please do the roll?
Zidic.
Yes.
Valdez.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Aldrich.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Brophy.
Yes.
Motion passes. Next on our agenda is item five, public comment. This is the time where members of the public have participated in the meeting without being part of the meeting agenda. A member of the public may address the board on an agenda topic or on another topic pertaining to school board business. We allocate a total of 15 minutes for public comment at this meeting. Each individual speaker may speak for up to 2.5 minutes. A sign up for public comment has been conducted online and in person prior to this evening's meeting. No one has signed up for public comment prior to this evening's meeting. We will move on to the next item on the agenda. Next on our agenda is item six, the consent agenda. And see on the screen, we have some personnel items, the minutes from our previous meeting, bills, wires, and a field trip request.
I will make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Make a motion by Aldrich, second, and a second by Brophy. Any discussion? Seeing none, Amber, can you please do the roll?
Zidic.
Yes.
Valdez.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Aldrich.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Brophy.
Yes.
Motion passes. Next on our agenda is item seven, a resolution for donations approval. And see, we have several donations on the screen.
I would like to make a motion to approve the donations, second.
We have a motion by Aldrich and a second by Johnson. Any discussion? Seeing none, Amber, can you please do the roll?
Zidic.
Yes.
Valdez.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Aldrich.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Brophy.
Yes.
Motion passes. Next on our agenda is item seven, a resolution for donations approval. And see, we have several donations on the screen.
I would like to make a motion to approve the donations, second.
We have a motion by Aldrich and a second by Johnson. Any discussion? Seeing none, Amber, can you please do the roll?
Zidic.
Yes.
Valdez.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Aldrich.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Brophy.
Yes.
Resolution passes. With that, I would like to take a moment to introduce our new Director of Finance, who was just approved by the Board in the consent agenda, David Draskovich. Hope I said that right. So, welcome.
Thank you.
Looking forward to working with you. Any introductory words?
I can't, I really didn't think about this.
Don't want to put you on the spot.
Yeah, just excited to join Shockley Sabers. Looking forward for the future and a little time with Bill. Hopefully I can fill the shoes, you know, of the beginning. So, hopefully provide that financial and current operations knowledge that he has given the district over his five years, five years here. So, thank you for everyone for having me here.
Thank you, David. Welcome. Next on our agenda is item eight, legislative update. And we have Representative Ben Baker here to provide an update. Ben represents District 54B, which includes Prior Lake, Jordan, several townships, and a proportion of Shockley. Hopefully I didn't miss anything there. Welcome, Ben.
Thank you for having me. Better be honest. Having this Peterson behind me, it feels like I'm having someone look over my shoulder. But yeah, it's great to be here. It's a pleasure to represent a portion of the School District of Shockley. And just really to, Superintendent Redmond told me I have about a half hour or so. So, just to give a brief update, just about what happened and really what we can do and how we can continue to partner together moving forward. And just want to say thank you to kick off. You know, a number of you are down at the Capitol, and Peterson is down quite a bit. And it really is a pleasure to work with you guys and be able to partner with Shockley Schools to really do what's best for us. And when we have that, that perspective, regardless of political persuasion or perspective, that's where we should be at. So, I serve on the Labor and Workforce Committee, and then I serve as the Vice Chair of the Education and Finance Committee within the House. So, I asked or requested to be on Labor and Workforce, really in large part because of the connection between education and workforce and workforce development. So, I really enjoyed that. And so, when we went into session, one, some of our priorities included, we wanted to address waste brought to the issue. That was a huge priority for our caucus. We continue to see that. And that really leads into a number of other priorities around affordability, public safety, and then supporting education, you know, increasing the standards and reducing mandates. That was probably something we heard a lot about. The last thing is really building for the future, and that's really around bond. If you're familiar with the political process at all, that's probably the most controversial or can be one of the more sticky things. And what we as a caucus went into it is we want to focus on critical infrastructure. So, roads, bridges, water, that critical infrastructure for our, that make our economy go. If you have driven to Jordan recently, I'll just leave by saying I'm sorry. There's a significant amount of road construction, but that is going to be a fantastic addition and really a safety piece for our community, for our county, and really the entire state as well. So, I just want a couple highlights from the education bill that are going to impact you and, you know, your new Finance Director. We'll get to know each other a little bit more. And but I just want to be very transparent. When the, when the education bill left the House, I voted for the bill. I was supportive of the bill. Was not perfect. I'll just say that. When the bill came back, and I was part of the, within the House that negotiated the bill, I voted against the bill. And it's not because I don't support education. It's just I don't feel that that bill was going to what we needed to do to address the needs of our community. We, throughout the entire session, we sought feedback, talked to many of you, and the overarching theme really centered around funding and flexibility, mandate relief, and local approval. And the bill did not do enough to address those issues. The biggest issue that I, that I had with the bill is that we increased, or we cut money to schools in the next two years by about $71 million. And we increased, we increased the Department of Ed budget by $18 million. So, we're cutting money going to schools, and we're funding the department for them. That's, that's just unthinkable. I look at the districts that I represent. You guys are in a very similar position in the future than Prior Lake and in Jordan as well. We have got to get back to where we're supporting our local schools, and our, our agencies have to face the same realities that are, that you guys are facing as, as a board. So, that's, just being very honest, that's why I voted against it. I also want to just prep you. And when I was speaking in Jordan, you know, there in a contract negotiation site building, just being very aware that we are, part of the cut that was made was this Blue Ribbon Commission. And we have to identify, committee that's part of this Blue Ribbon Commission has to identify about $250 billion in cuts to special education. Okay? I had a bill to help reduce some paperwork reduction, and we couldn't even agree on that, like simple paperwork reduction pieces. The people with different perspectives came out of the woodwork, and we couldn't agree on that. I am very, very concerned that we will be able to come up with 250 million reductions. If we don't agree to that, it will come out of the cross subsidy, which in essence means it's a general cut to all of you. So, I'd share that because I don't want to be back here next year and have you say, man, what in the world? So, I just want to be very transparent. A positive thing in the bill was the whole harmless for compensatory. We have to have an honest conversation about compensatory revenue, and is it meeting the needs? Is it doing what it was intended to do, very simply? And I literally, I could talk a long time about that, but I'll just, I'll leave that and you can give me a call. There were a number of provisions, and MSBA did a really good job this session, I felt, about with the tie in the House. So, they had a Republican author of their priority bills, and they had a Democrat author of their priority bills, so that they could be shepherded through the process and have an advocate from both sides of the aisle. I thought that was very wise that they did that. So, when I met with Superintendent Redmond, and we, you know, they went through the priority pieces in the LOR, the local option, and it was a piece that was important to increase that. We did it in a different way within the initial bill, in something called basic supplemental aid. But basically, it was a dollar for dollar into LOR, because that's a dollar for dollar into the district. You put it on the formula, and it gets, you know, it gets kind of a little bit. Probably the most frustrating part of session, I don't need to be a Debbie Downer here, but the most frustrating part of session is, is Jim had worked really hard, and we talked a lot about the instructional hours for secondary kids. And I said it on the floor during this discussion, but we've got to think differently about what we're doing with our kids and this whole idea of seat time. We have to think differently, because if we don't, as a public school system, kids will go elsewhere. They will do other things. So, there was bipartisan support. Mary Frances Clardy, wonderful person, she carried the bill. I was a co-author. And, you know, it was included into the policy bill. And then the department came, the Department of Ed came after the bill had already been heard, moved through the process, was a part of the final policy bill, and put a $4 million, or $40 million fiscal load on the bill. And that's just a concept called that by fiscal load. You know, we talked a lot, and that's frustrating, because there was multiple times that that could have come through. There was bipartisan support for this bill that would allow you, as a board, to innovate and think, well, what do our Shockley schools need? And the department wanted no part of it. And then even more frustrating, they came back after it was amended out and said, we'll, we'll pull that fiscal load next year. We just stay fair about next year. And that's just, that's just maddening, and frankly, it's unacceptable, like that an agency would do that. And I can stand and I can, you know, yell from the hilltops, but we frankly, we honestly, we need, we need our, you know, MSBA and the different agencies to stand up and just say, that's wrong. We shouldn't be doing that. So, yeah, so I can go into a lot of different things, but I really want to just open it up to you guys for questions, and then I just want to end with this one little piece.
Any questions?
I have a quick one. Mr. Baker, thanks for coming. You've been very accessible to me. I know we've got to meet a couple times, and I appreciate that. And I also appreciate you dumbing down this politics a bit, so that somebody like me can sort of understand it. You mentioned the $250 million kind of special education. What is, what kind of budget, what kind of budget is there now, and what percentage cut is that? Or is it reasonably feasible? I mean, is it a billion dollars that's still in there now, or what? Any idea?
I can't remember what it is off the top of my head. Maybe our business managers, or two of them over there may know.
I don't necessarily know the exact number. I'm just curious if this is like even manageable.
It's, it is a significant cut. So, but we have to look at the growth within spending. If we go back to, I think it was the December forecast, talked about, one of the higher growth areas was special education. And there are some things that we need to do as, as school officials. Our role in, you know, when we're sitting in those IDP meetings is to, to really look at, okay, this is what the, what is being advocated for the students, but is it, is it, you know, faith, free and appropriate public education? Is it appropriate? And that's where the disagreement oftentimes comes in about what is appropriate. And, you know, we had, I had a meeting today in my professional role, where we'd all love to have one-on-one parents with kids, but oftentimes when we do that, we're over servicing kids, and we're not building that independence. So, we have to have those, those honest conversations, but that's hard with parents as well, because the parent's job is to advocate for their, their child. So, there's that, that dialogue back and forth. I can get back to you, the total cost. To your point about, about dumbing this down, I'm not sure that I completely understand this political process. It's a little nuanced.
Mr. Chair, I want to give Kristi a chance, a chance. She has a question, just because, remote. Kristi, did you have a question?
No, I don't. I guess I will just say that I appreciate Representative Baker, everything that you're doing for education and our schools. I know we spent time together on the Capitol, we've seen each other in committee meetings, and I know the session may not have ended the way that we all wanted it to end from an education standpoint, but appreciate you, you know, putting a good foot forward with trying to do what's best for our schools. And also appreciate the, the support for this bill of allowing the remote participation for board meetings, which has allowed me to participate tonight. Otherwise, I wouldn't have been able to. So, that was, that's been huge for some school districts.
Absolutely.
Again, thank you for being here tonight and certainly representing Public Education Law. The question around funding in terms of student enrollment data decline, and that's for a greater than last 20 years, and seeing, you know, the cost to run public education isn't getting any lasting time soon, but yet the revenues get capped at that dollar per student. We've also talked about caps on levy, not that local levies are the answer either, right? So, what is your vision, just looking at that trajectory over the next three to five years? What's going to happen with funding flummoxed? How are we going to sustain public education in the great state of Minnesota?
To be completely transparent, if I knew the answer to that and I had a personal ball to do that, I, I would retire from the legislature and go make a lot more money. But I think at, at the core, it gets down to, there are some, some core functions that we have to do. We have to provide from the state level, and then, and then what do districts choose to do on top of that? And, you know, I think one of the pieces that we really have to have an honest conversation about is the head story revenue. And the, you know, without getting too deep into the weeds, there's, there are districts that are operating buildings that aren't anywhere near capacity, and the only reason they're going to gain those buildings is because of the head story revenue coming. If they close down those buildings, they'll lose revenue. So, you know, there are lots of ideas, you know, looking at square footage, looking at different pieces, the square footage, you know, based off your enrollment. All of those things have to play into it. We have to have an honest conversation about the, the revenue that we're having. And then we also have to look at the, just the waste brought to us across the system, across state government in general. You know, one of the pieces that we had to, to address the funding piece was, and you know, this is, everyone has a different perspective, but universal meals. Now, within the negotiation, there's, there's quality half cents that the state pays for a meal. This is a period waiting to leave. And right at the end, six and a half, or six cents was put in to the basic paid now. And I share that because it opens the door for looking at universal meals. And, you know, my wife and I, we can, we can support paying for, for my 12-year-old's lunch. We can't hire another, another, you know, math teacher or a third period teacher to lower class sizes. So, that, that universal meals program has just grown in, in cost, and it is going to continue to eat up more and more and more in the state budget. When we were negotiating that bill, I said exactly that. You know, right now it's 2%. What is it going to be? And it is going to eat up the state budget. Andrew Myers is a representative from the Lakewood and Tonto area, and he had a bill that would have put $100 million into the local option revenue. And it was families making, family of four making $160,000 or more paid for their kids' meal. Everyone else was underneath. I think we honestly missed an opportunity with meals. I mean, there's not a person in, in Shockley or Minnesota that wouldn't say, let's make sure hungry kids are fed. Like, that's just being a good human being. But there has to be some, some conversation about, is there a threshold that, and then we redirect that money into our schools. So, I think some of it is, is how we're spending our dollars as well. Thank you. Kind of a complex question. Yeah.
No, for me to wrap up, I'd probably still, if that's all right. I just want to, you know, Representative Baker, you know, we appreciate working with you and very, you know, I just applaud your responsiveness, you're available. We have a, we have a lot of great conversations. And we've done some really good work. In fact, we were in our policy committee before this meeting talking about attendance, and I think we've had a lot of partnership in Scott County and at the state level, and we're doing some things that we just think, boy, it's been too long. We should have been doing this a while ago. And we've got other people from across the state reaching out. And so, working in partnership like that, and we also somehow veered from that in the policy committee, and we were talking about seat time in Carnegie units as well. So, that is one of those, especially with the academies of Shockley. We're more, we, we've got to be more focused on the student learning rather than the time spent in the desk. And that ultimately, and when we've got bipartisan support in doing that, I agree that sometimes political things get stuck in the way, and that's incredibly frustrating. But really appreciate your responsiveness whenever we reach out. You always return the call, return the text, and, you know, just really, really thank you for that. And thanks for being here tonight, too.
It's a pleasure to be here.
If I could just thank you as well. Like Dr. Redmond said at the end, there's never a call or text that goes unreturned. You're always available and greatly appreciated, and it really supports the students of Scott County. So, thank you.
If I could just wrap up, I think it's important to recognize what happened, and Speaker Marissa Swartman and her husband were assassinated in their home. And, I mean, there is no place for political violence whatsoever. And, you know, Senator Hoffman, and, you know, thank goodness that he's doing well. And people have asked me a lot about, like, Ben, how do you feel about things? And I think the thing that, in that, you saw the worst of society. But, you know, also, and just a kudos to the Shockley School District, you know, Ashley Lehman was just in a tragic car accident, and, but just hearing how the Shockley School District, the Shockley community, community of Jordan, you know, we, my wife and my family and I go to church with Lehman, how the community rallies. And, and I think oftentimes, the noise of society and these things and social media, it amplifies the, the worst of our society. And I think, you know, we all have different perspectives on different topics, and we have to get back to, to leading in a manner that is, we can have respectful dialogue, but we don't need to attack, but we don't need to bill hard, we don't need to call names. And I think that's why I want to say thank you to you guys for your partnership, and just it's a pleasure to, to serve you and serve the Shockley community. And what I would say, that's what my commitment is moving forward. I'm going to continue to lead in a common sense way. And if you ever disagree with me, pick up the phone and call. And I think my cell phone number is out there. My wife doesn't like that very much, but, but yeah, I think we, we, we saw the worst of society. We're seeing the best of society rallying around a family that is struggling. And let's, let's continue to focus on what is, what is going on, about what's happening. So, thank you. Thank you, Representative Baker. Thank you.
Next on our agenda is an information item, item 9.1, the Annual Crisis and Safety Steering Committee highlights. And here to present is Jim Pousich, our Assistant Superintendent, and Ken Christiansen, our District Crisis and Safety Coordinator. Welcome down.
Thank you, Chair Smith, members of the board. Now, I feel like Vice Chair Peterson is staring at my bald spot from behind him, and I'll live with that. But thank you for having us tonight for, for our annual update. I'm super happy to have Ken here with me after his first year as our Crisis and Safety Coordinator. He did a wonderful job. Just to kind of kick us off, you know, everything us off, you know, everything that we do does tie back, including crisis and safety, to our compelling vision. We're constantly being vigilant. We're constantly planning. We're constantly asking questions about what if and listening to the experts and building plans that do support each and every one of our, of our students. Just a quick reminder, the way our team flows, Ken manages the day-to-day. He works directly with me. We also have a Crisis and Safety Team. We meet quarterly. That team then pushes information out into our buildings. We're building teams to meet quarterly. And I would really stress with back-to-school, this Red Box down here, because we, we spend a lot of time during the back-to-school period with our teachers, making sure that they're ready for any events that could take place, reviewing the Crisis and Safety Manual training, et cetera. And I think Ken is going to talk a little bit here in a moment about some of the next steps that we have to take this even, even further in the coming year. Some quick updates, we will have two new SROs this year. Congratulations to Officer Mike Santos, who will now be an investigator in the Shakopee community. And also congratulations to Gary Kern, who's moved down to the, to the DCA where he will be an investigator at the state level and traveling through all Minnesota and doing his work. So they've been replaced by Jeff Whiteoff, who was an SRO previously at West, and Keith Youngke, who will be servicing our high school. Captain Derek Nordvitz will now be supervising Sergeant Angela Trun now, and she'll be my direct contact as I work with the Shakopee police on a fairly regular basis to make sure that we have the right things in place and that communication is ongoing. Just a quick review of items we handled in the last school year. On this, on this particular slide, I would just have you note, you know, we do have a threat assessment checklist that we really worked hard on this year and made sure that everyone in our schools was aware of it. Basically, anytime we have a comment, the social media post, anything, no matter how small it might seem, we immediately walk through it with this threat assessment checklist and we involve local law enforcement. There's even a morsel of credit to it. So this, this checklist is used on a regular basis and it's a, it's just a huge part of making sure that everyone is safe and being able to respond, well, I heard this rumor. What did you do? This checklist is where we go. And then the other piece I would just highlight, you know, we just had Representative Baker here. We were the first heart-safe school in Minnesota. Heart-safe schools were legislated this past year. Now, in the state of Minnesota, over the next, next 12 to 18 months, every school is going to need to have a plan. We've already got one in place. It meets the letter of the law. We've already done our CPR training. And again, it's just, it's a part of how we do business and I think it speaks to the proactive nature of how we handle crisis and safety in our schools. So I'm going to turn it over to Ken, who will talk a little bit about what's next.
Thank you. So I just wanted to touch base on some of the big things coming up that I'm going to be working on this year. One of the big ones is a problem we identified last year, which was our fire drills and the equipment weather. Right now, our policy with the Shakopee Fire Department is if a fire alarm goes off, evacuate the building, regardless of where the alarm is, regardless of the student age, regardless of the weather outside. If there's a Level 5 twister coming through, we evacuate the building. So I'm working closely with the local and state fire marshal and we're coming up with a plan to be approved by them to find a place for our students inside the building, should there be inclement weather outside. So right now, the plan is at the state fire marshal level and hopefully within the next week or two, it'll come back to me. We'll revise it with any changes that they see and then we'll, we're starting with SUNPAP, put it out to the school, start training their staff and come over the plan in place and then we'll move on to the other schools from there. The other thing that we're, we rolled out our multi-tiered safety matrix last year. Again, this, to refresh, this matrix really emphasizes the whole and secure levels of the matrix where, where it's business as usual inside the school. So whole, secure, we keep teaching, we keep learning. And then the bottom of the matrix with our lockdown, evacuation, shelter is some of the more serious things. So we're able to move within that matrix and adjust based on the scenario and the situation that is impacted. New this year, we added a little change down under lockdown. It now says run, hide, fight, and that's a change this year. And part of that change is we used to have ALICE training and all of our staff members went through ALICE training. ALICE training is great training, but it's a national training. They cover schools, it covers businesses, it covers every, every public building out there. We wanted something that was more tailored to Shakopee, to Shakopee students in our community. So we went with a run, hide, fight model, which essentially teaches all the same aspects of ALICE, but is more tailored to Shakopee and our students and staff. So this year, we're rolling out, instead of ALICE training, they will be doing, all of our staff will be doing training on a multi, the multi-tiered safety matrix. And part of that training is the run, hide, fight. The biggest thing with that is allowing our staff to be empowered to make the decision in a critical incident, what is best for them, for their students and for their space, instead of just the generic do best. We're giving them the empowerment and the teaching and learning to be able to make the decision that works best for them. So that rolls out August 1st. All the teachers will get the new training. That training is a video. I believe it's about nine minutes long that covers the whole safety matrix and everything in it and what they can do with that. On the website, we still have the video that went up last year. This video is available to the public also. That covers a little more generic safety resources and stuff like that with reunification and some other of that stuff. So that video is also still available. The next video that we hope to roll out later this year would be a video to staff, or excuse me, to families and students that advise them and teach them on the safety matrix. So they can go into the schools a little more empowered with the knowledge to take care of themselves if necessary in a critical incident. So back to school, our big thing, one of our big things is, for me, one of my big goals is really offer up myself and the SROs, one-on-one engagement with all the teachers. We really want the teachers to reach out and say, my space is different than every other space in this district. How do I act with my students in a critical incident? And we're really, we're looking for one-on-one to open up my schedule and go to their space and look at their space and say, what's your best situation? Do you have a door right there? Do you not have a door available? Do you have students that are not able to run that you're going to have to care for? What's your situation and how do we deal with that? I'm also going to meet with every SRO in principle. We're going to go through a whole safety checklist that we do, test all of our emergency buttons, check all our door locks to make sure everything works. And then we're going to use Raptor to track all this to make sure all of our staff gets the training that they need and is up to date and move forward from there. So our focus, the individual staff engagement, of course, that's the biggest thing. Support for our crisis and safety plans, vulnerability assessments will be rolled out last year and then start working on those, the stage fire drills and hopefully get those all in place by the end of this whole year. Questions?
I would just really quickly to thank Communications for the work on the videos, Ken for starring in our videos. And also just can't say enough about, you know, all the first responders in Scott County, Shakopee Police, Shakopee Fire, Scott County Sheriff. The partnership is just second to none. So.
You mentioned like that perfect storm, like there's a fire alarm and then of course, some of the weather events we had as of late. But a topic that came up that I heard recently, outdoor spaces, right? And in extreme examples, obviously there were some unfortunate events, you know, graduation, you know, I appreciate the security that was put in place, you know, whole Shakopee's graduation ceremony. But is there part of this plan, how is that evolving in terms of those outdoor space, you know, venues where a crisis event occurs?
Yeah, we have, coming out hopefully this year, it's in final production, is a crisis manual for events outside the school, football games, hockey games, everything like that. So all the way down to plays and play practice. So if something happens during play practice, whoever's running that can go to the crisis manual and say, this is who I need to contact. This is what I need to do. So that, that crisis manual will be available. Because right now, if you're doing a play practice at East Middle School and you get a tornado warning, there's no availability of where's our tornado shelters at seven o'clock at night, right? So we want all those available online. So whoever's working can pull those up immediately and get to those, those maps and stuff.
And that top bullet point about safety plans for activities is to your point. And I know Ken had mentioned Lisa Ron last year with all the facility rentals to make sure that if you rent a facility, here's the link to what you need in the event, something where to go wrong during your rental. You know, leading up to our graduation, you know, Ken did an amazing job with our PD, the even Prairie PD, I know after that event that happened the evening before ours. And Captain Nordvitz was available, available to me throughout the day on Saturday and, and since that we've already even talked about, you know, should we move graduation back to Shakopee with the end of the year? I'm like, job number one is to get Ken to sit down with whoever Chief Taylor designated to start to lay out a plan for that facility. So it's a great question and something that we're very aware of.
I suppose you guys are on top of it. So I really appreciate the work that you do.
I'm just thinking about the, the fire alarm thing. It seems like a pretty challenging training issue to, to fight your instinct to leave when you hear that, hear that alarm.
I will say, one of the things we're looking at is the fire department was real hesitant to say, do anything other than what we trained the kids to do, right? So one of the things we're, that we're looking at is fire alarm goes off, evacuate the building. Within 30 seconds of evacuating the building, admin can say, no, it's bad outside, move to staging locations. So we're not taking away that muscle memory of getting out of the building in a fire, but somewhere in that process of moving saying, okay, let's move to the gym, let's move to the office, let's move to a safe location until we can establish that we need to evacuate.
Question, your last bullet point with, with those looking for funds, is that funds that you're looking for from the county, the state or the district itself?
Mostly county, state. I'm just constantly out there searching, looking for any safety grants that are available and trying to utilize that to put any of the plans that we have in place already and stuff that's coming up.
Mr. Christensen, thank you. And Ken, and I gotta call you Ken on your name, Bill, for the job. We had a few events, of course, last year. We'll probably have some next year. That's just why you're here and that's why you're going to put these protocols into place. Do you know off the top of your head, how many like holds and secures we had last year? Did those go according to plan? Or, you know, communication to parents and everything work out and that's been, and all to what?
Yeah, I think every incident has learning ability, right? We can learn from every incident. Every incident afterwards, we sit down and we say, what went well, what didn't go well? Every step, I think of the, what did we call it? The plane unintended landing or whatever it was called, right? They called a, they called a secure and then they questioned, should it have been a hole? What should it have been? Well, we really sat down and looked and said, it's a matrix. You can move within that system, right? You went on a hold right away, which froze the whole school and said, just stay where you are for five minutes so we can reevaluate. Okay, we're okay inside the building. Let's go to a secure. So to be able to look at those and say, what went well, what didn't work well, so the rest of the schools can learn from that. And that's part of our, our buildings, building meetings now, is I go to every building meeting and say, okay, the high school did a hold. This is why, this is what worked, this is what didn't work. So all the other schools can learn from the other schools and what they're doing under safety laws.
And I would just say too, holes are very common because we have a number of medically fragile students. Student has a seizure in the hallway, the last thing we want are for five other students to see it. So, you know, in a typical building, we put the building on hold at the high school. It might be a way because of the size. Student needs to leave an ambulance for any number of reasons. Again, we want to protect the dignity of the students. So, okay, we're going to go on a hold for five minutes. So those types of things are very, very common because it's just better for everybody. You know, the other levels, we visit very seldom. And, you know, and then we, to Ken's point, we always follow up by meeting with that buildings crisis team and agree to see what went well and what didn't work in the future.
Questions?
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
And Jim will stay put and present for the next item. It's item 9.2, the Leadership Retreat Highlights for 2025.
Jim, before you, before you jump in, sorry. Amber, are you, we're, we're still, Kristi's still flipping in and out and we're not sure who's wire or whether where she's at or, sorry.
I'm looking at the back. I was going to say, Larry, come on.
It did just start during that last presentation.
Yeah, definitely. Appreciate that.
On his head, what's the problem?
I can see you guys just fine. You're not going in and out on my end.
And we can hear you. So, so that's good. It's just the display on the television.
She's just facing faces.
It was comical for a second because every time Amber would look, he would come back and she would look away and then the screen would go black.
It was like a bird was snuggled up with us.
So just wanted to take a few minutes tonight to talk about our leadership retreat, which took place back in, in the middle of June. We intentionally have it in June so that as both building and department leaders plan for the year, they can, can really be honed in on, on what our focus is. So our goal each year at the, at the leadership retreat tied to the compelling vision is to just make sure that we're, we're building skills and giving leaders tools so that we can all move forward as a school district together. And we're constantly trying to support the compelling vision, constantly trying to support what we call our district priorities, whether it be a literacy implementation, a map implementation, assessment for learning, et cetera, et cetera. I, I think the key to the leadership retreat is that last bullet point. We want people to feel like they're equipped to lead and take action with whatever it is the priorities are in their building, the priorities that we have as a district. It's also a really rare time where we can get everybody together and people aren't looking at their phones, they aren't running away to put out fires. You know, we just, we know that we can all be together. We can all be focused and we can all figure out how we're moving together in a very intentional and connected way, you know, as a school system. This year, I would say that upper left-hand corner piece of building collective efficacy was our absolute focus. Collective efficacy is really that core belief that you can take intentional steps as a leader to build where you, you recognize that we as a group control our destiny. You know, we as a school have the ability to work with students in a way where we can improve achievement. We can, we can shape the choices that the students are making and we as leaders really, you know, we're not being kind of bad. The way I like to say is we have the ability to shape the world. The world doesn't necessarily shape us. And, you know, one of the things that we started out with is, you know, Mike likes to talk a lot about John Hattie's research and John Hattie's sort of the ultimate in education research. He's done study after study that shows that there is nothing more central to a school's success than collective efficacy. Again, that belief that we as, we as leaders have the ability to control the, help the government. And again, there are a number of intentional steps that leaders can take to build collective efficacy within their staff and within their direct reports. And we really spent a lot of time focusing on that at Canada Berry for day one and then back to district office for day two. And you can see, we had a number of partners who supported us in this project and we asked people to really leave their, you know, thinking about how does this impact your site plan? How does this impact the way you work within our, our district systems? And just how do you focus going forward as you get ready for this 25, 26 school year? These were some of our learning targets. And again, I would, you know, if you look at those learning targets, they all really go back to action. You know, this isn't just sit and listen and think that was neat. This was sit and listen and then come up with, you know, what is your plan to actively move your building forward and how will you be engaging your staff, your students and your community to really build a better school and a better, a better Shakopee system? We did definitely take time to celebrate all of the work that we've done on systemic structures. And, you know, when you think about the past three years, you know, whether it be crisis and safety and how far that's come or pieces like or pieces like Welcome Center or where we're at with teacher evaluation, the work that we've done with attendance that you'll hear more about during the handbook, you know, piece. We've really done a number of great things and we celebrated those pieces and then really pushed the question, you know, how do we connect these things? You know, how do we build a more connected system based on the on the work that we've we've already done and that we continue, continue to do? And, you know, this is something that you can take a peek at, you know, after the meeting. But over in the lower left hand corner, you know, we we really kick it up by saying, what is it that you care deeply about? And what is it that you believe that you can do? And when you, when you look at the words on the screen, you know, you can see the student-centered, community-driven language and the really, the belief that we do have the ability to just continue to grow and improve, you know, what's going on within our our shock these schools. And, you know, what's most important always is what's next. Next Monday, in this room, we will have that entire leadership group together where we'll start our official kickoff of of this coming school year. We'll be meeting with Nick Walzberger to get some legal updates. Each of our leaders will be sharing systems updates about what's new with HR, business office, et cetera, et cetera. So the people have what they, what they really need to go forward and lead their buildings. You know, and it'll be an opportunity for us to to meet all of our new leaders and start to get them to to be more ingrained in our system. You'll be hearing throughout the year about our instructional leadership meetings, which I think we're gonna go even deeper on this year, our continued systems meetings. And and one of the things I would really call out is our elementary and secondary leaders really have high functioning PLCs at this point. They're meeting on a regular basis. They're getting in the classrooms. They're checking on our literacy implementation, our math implementation, AFL. And they're, they're really, you know, more engaged in this work probably than any other time. And I I can't say enough about that. And you will all be having the opportunity to hear presentations from different building leaders about different district priorities that you've noted about in the past and are bordering on such again as the literacy adoption and the new social studies curriculum and and all of those pieces. So we're, we're super excited about where we're at. We think that we've given our leaders some highly effective tools heading into this year. And, you know, we as a leadership team tend to model what we what we expect from our from our principals. So questions about leadership retreat or where we're going in the coming school year with any of our priorities?
See, no questions. It's a testament to your great presentation, I guess.
Don't put me on the sleeve. You're still suffering.
Thank you, Jim. Yeah, and you're gonna stay put for for the next item? Next on our agenda is an action item, item ten point one, twenty twenty five, twenty six online handbooks.
Great. And I I just wanna kick this off by saying, we moved to the online handbook. I couldn't be happier that we got to have that in the rearview mirror and that we have all of our information in one place. And, you know, hopefully you've had a chance to review some of the changes. If you have questions, you can ask them. But just very quick, very high level. The biggest shifts to the handbook this year are going to be what I would call universal shifts. One, Tiffany and her team did a great job working with principals to put together a a one-page document that will help parents with all of the different technology pieces that we have. I had watched and chat and I had his parent, I'm guessing. He's never sure which one to log into. We're hopeful that adding this to the handbook will be a guide to parents. You've heard us talk about Stop Finder, which we will be kicking off. The whole backside is dedicated to that. We also will be adding the attendance document, which I believe you saw a year ago that was developed by our leadership team at our systems meetings. And I, I really wanna say that this this document is a testimony to the work that our leaders are doing. I was at an MBE workshop last year about attendance. And when I shared this document, the response I got from the folks at the department was, every district should be moving forward this way. Every district should be having this conversation, making sure that policy and actions align. So we we started moving to this last year. This year, we will be more direct with it because it'll be in the handbook. We didn't feel like waiting six months was the right thing to do. So those those four documents are universal. And I think as we, as you looked at the language, a lot of the language was elementary, middle school, high school, making some tweaks to their handbook language that may not have aligned with this. So I'm not gonna go into those line by line because again, it just, it does align to be to the document that we did. And the other, the other component that I really wanna call out, and this was in the rap a couple of weeks ago, we did finally add some language around AI. It's fairly general, but general intentionally because it will give administrators and teachers the ability to, you know, more directly handle some of the challenges that AI, you know, brings to our classrooms. And we're trying to encourage students to create their own content as opposed to use tools to create. There's a time for the tool. We wanna honor the time for the tool. We also wanna make sure that when it's misplanned, we have a way to, a way to respond. You know, just other things I wanna make sure you're aware of in case you hear. We are gonna go to a formative passing time at the elementary with the additional five minutes being added to advisory. We've worked with Dale and the SCA on this. The principals have worked with the teachers on it. You know, there's a need for additional advisory time and four minutes is plenty of time for passing. A whole, a whole East and West at this point, in particular, with students using backpacks to to carry their materials. And then three things I would just take a moment to highlight at the high school level. One, we we will be adding a a line that just says, the student retakes a class, which they have the right to do. The original grade will remain on the transcript, however, only the second grade or only the higher grade will come towards a GPA. So we're not averaging them. We're just saying, we're gonna leave it on there because it did, the first grade did happen. The second one is the one that counts. We amended to to recognize EPO because that is also a partnership that we've gone into. And then the the final thing is the high school did have a task force to address some of the ongoing parking lot challenges and try to make the parking lot more both student and user friendly. And so those are mentioned in here. So if I miss something, please ask. If there's clarification or greater depth on any of this, again, I'm more than willing to to sit for questions.
Mr. Chair, I mean, you know, I had been considered an AI policy. And again, shock me taking the initiative to put something in in the handbook. Is this a conversation that's happening at maybe MSBA level? And maybe Vice Chair Peterson has a perspective on that as well? Because, you know, governance over use of AI, I think, needs to be part of that conversation.
I won't answer for Chair Peterson. I will say that Brian and his department drove this conversation. So this wasn't a group of principals just sort of making it up. This was one of the experts, which would be the tech department, who pulled together the the language and the nature of the gates of the building. So I don't know, Vice Chair Peterson, is there any talk at the MSBA level?
I'm not aware of any at this time. You know, a lot of the model, model policies from MSBA are legislative driven and statute driven. So I I believe that this would probably be one of those things that would fall into a category of local control because every district is going to utilize it differently. But I don't have any knowledge of MSBA working on any sort of a policy at this time.
Yeah, we we made it K twelve simply because whenever we leave a level out, it seems to creep into that level. So we don't expect our elementaries to actually, you know, need it at this time or hopefully anytime. But we figured we may as well just put it out there.
Oh, I trust there's kindergartners that are smarter. I ask more more so in, again, the governance piece. If we talk about student achievement and you find out after the fact that it was, you know, AI was skewing some of that, right? It's just a new world and I don't know that we can fully grasp like what a can and can't do and how much should or shouldn't be used. Appreciate your point.
I just wanna say, having all the information coalesced with the families on a one-page document to proceed really would be helpful because I mean, I'm creating some limits and if they have problems and just crazy, especially, especially for the families in the middle school that are just starting out that shop.
Thank you. Again, I would commend our communications office and our principals for the principal.
Any further questions or comments? See, none. This is an action item, so entertain a motion. So moved?
Second.
A motion by Brophy and a second by Aldrich. Any further discussion? See, none. Amber, can you please do the roll?
Sidik.
Yes.
Valdez.
Yeah.
Peterson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Aldrich.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Brophy.
Yes. Motion passes. Thank you, Jim. Next on our agenda is item ten point two, a resolution relating to determining the necessity of approving a new referendum revenue authorizations and calling a special election. That is a long subtopic. And Dr. Redmond and Bill Manazi are outgoing director of finance and operations. That's, I don't know, it's, I don't think, we have to differentiate you two. Absolutely. Welcome, gentlemen. Thank you. Dr. Redmond, any, we're both on this agenda. Am I, yes, any introductory comments before I, just a couple of brief comments?
All you.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you. Before getting into this, I just wanted to offer, as was mentioned at the beginning, to me, my own individual congratulations to David and and welcome. And I'm happy for David and and really excited for shock me. I think you guys are gonna be in in great shape. And really good hands moving forward. So congratulations. As it relates to the agenda item, the first agenda item, which is ten point two, is a resolution calling for a new referendum revenue authorization. Really what this is, is just the official documents for what the school board approved last month on June twenty third, when the act, when the action take place. This is the formality or the legal part of the special election. So as it relates to the individual resolution, you can see that under letter A is question one. That is the six hundred and twenty dollars per pupil, the amount that is tax neutral on a four hundred thousand dollar home. That's outlined in in part A of the resolution. And then part B is the three hundred and ten dollars, question two. And that number was updated to include the CPI, which is the Consumer Price Index for tax payable in two thousand twenty six. So that's really the only number that we were waiting on from last month. And you just had updated from the State Department on CPI. We don't have that. And you can see that that three hundred and ten dollars is reflected of that update. Entertain a motion to approve. I have a question.
So the nine hundred and thirty dollars per student, how much revenue will that raise next year? Six point eight?
Seven point five.
Seven point five.
The total, yeah. Six twenty raises five million and and ten thousand. And the three ten raises two point five million.
Based on current enrollment?
Yep.
Based on twenty five, twenty six enrollment or twenty four, twenty five enrollment?
Based on enrollment forecast for each of those years. So sorry, the the first year of revenue would be fiscal twenty seven. So based on our projection for fiscal twenty seven, that would be the initial. Thank you. I wonder if you mentioned that that puts us at the the cap. The second question puts us at the cap for the, the value period of permits to levy based on trans. Correct. Yep, the the projected cap for tax payable in twenty twenty six, fiscal twenty seven, is that's, would be the sum of both question one.
While we're on that topic, Bill, the cap, I've seen it in this slide, but in the past and in the future presentation. You say the communities have a greater per pupil total revenue that they can get from the cap on the levies. Is that just based on what the cap set at at the time that the levies passed?
Yeah, there, there are a few school districts in the metro that are above the levy cap. I I don't know exactly just specifically.
Some of them were above the cap when that law got put in, so they were allowed to continue to go to that level. So they, they were not sunsetted completely, but they were allowed to continue on.
Chair, I think that's perfect. You answered the question. Question one fails, the vote on question two doesn't matter? Correct. So even if question two passed ninety nine percent to one, or the first question fails, second question doesn't, that vote doesn't matter?
That's correct.
That's what I figured I just wanted to, for the public to know.
And then another clarification question. So if both questions fail, or I guess if the first question fails, will that be eight hundred and dollars to leave that needs to be carried?
So the, the way that, the way that the timing lays out for this, so November two thousand twenty five would be the the ballot. And so that would be tax payable for the community in calendar two thousand twenty six. And then school district revenue in fiscal year two thousand twenty seven. So our fiscal year runs July through June. So right now, we're just starting fiscal year two thousand twenty six. We started that on July first. So what we're talking about here is school district revenue for fiscal year two thousand twenty seven. So July first of two thousand twenty six through June thirty of two thousand twenty seven. So to answer your question directly, we would need to come up with budget adjustments for that approximate amount in fiscal year.
And has any number projected for fiscal year?
For for two thousand twenty seven, yes. We we have.
Twenty nine.
For twenty nine? No, I I did not carry our long range for planning model up that far. The one that we will update for this year would include twenty nine, fiscal year two thousand twenty nine. The long range planning model that we did last winter included estimates for fiscal twenty five at that point. And then two thousand twenty six, twenty seven, twenty. That's the part we said about. It's the new finance director's problem.
I've just noticed with projections after all three years, it gets very dicey of what you're seeing because of just so much change within legislation can happen. So.
Absolutely. Good point. Entertain a motion to.
I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
A motion by Peterson?
Second.
And then second by Johnson. Further discussion? This is a resolution. Amber, can you please do the roll?
Sidik.
Yes.
Valdez. Yeah. Peterson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Aldrich.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Brophy.
Yes. Resolution passes. And Bill will again present on the next action item, item ten point three, the notice of special election. Yes, thank you. Again, very similar information here. If you understand agenda in ten point two, then ten point three is very, very similar. I would just like to call your attention to the tax tables for question one and question two, which is shown on page three and four of the special election notice. You'll recall I referred to question one as tax neutral on an average priced home. You can see that under the residential homestead heading, estimated market value of a four hundred thousand dollar residential homestead. The, the outgoing taxes from paying off our debt service levy is two hundred and nine dollars. And then question one would would be an investment of two hundred and nine dollars, such that the impact, the annual impact is tax neutral on a four hundred thousand dollar home. And then flipping finally to page four, the same tax schedule for question two, now with the three hundred and ten dollar per pupil. You can see that again, on that same four hundred thousand dollar residential homestead, the investment would be a hundred and five dollars per year or eight dollars and seventy one cents per month. So a four hundred thousand dollar home, question one with the expiring debt service levy amount. And question two, the sum would be eight dollars and seventy one cents per month. Entertain a motion to approve. So moved? A motion by Brophy and a second by Johnson. Any further discussion? See, none. Amber, can you please do the roll?
Sidik.
Yes.
Valdez.
Yeah.
Peterson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Aldrich.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Brophy.
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Bill.
Next on our agenda is item ten point four, a meeting for the canvassing election results. And Dr. Redmond will present.
Yeah, very, very straightforward on the agenda item. You'll notice ten four. When, when there is a, an election on the ballot that we've called, we need to canvas those results. As a school board, taking the guidance from. to canvas those results as a school board, taking the guidance from Scott County elections in terms of timing and some of those things that we've learned over the years. We are suggesting that that meeting is at 6:00 PM on Thursday, November 13.
Yes, that is a Thursday.
I didn't think, but I knew the fourth was a Tuesday. You, kind of previously, you got it way more sophisticated.
No, I didn't see.
I did, I did, I did. And again, we're open to suggestions, but that seems to, you know, kind of, people seem to prefer evening meetings when we've done that. The other time we've done it is 7:00 AM on that same day. So, yeah, this would be an action item, and the proposal would be for adding a school board meeting for canvassing the election results, 6:00 PM on November 13.
That has to be within 10 days of the election, correct?
Yes.
I will make a motion to approve the canvassing on November 13 at 6:00. About motion by Aldrich and a second by Valdez. Any further discussion? Amber, can you please do the roll?
Sidik.
Yes.
Valdez. Yeah. Peterson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Aldrich.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Brophy.
Yes. Motion carries. Next on our agenda is another action item, 10.5, addition of temporary committee constructive feedback. And Dr. Redmond will present.
And this is, you know, we're presenting an idea, can you make that a little bit longer?
You bet, yep.
Please, Amber, and it does say suggested committee members. We took some of the folks from, well, we've done this in the past, and this is an opportunity for the committee. We named it constructive feedback. There's a lot of, you know, one of the, one of the requirements of a school district, there's a lot of legal requirements in terms of sharing information and doing that, and really, this committee becomes a sounding board for that, like, oh, wait a second, not sure that says, you know, says it in a clear manner, or all kinds of different things. But there's, you know, we've got kind of meeting dates set up, and then suggested committee members, which reminds me that I was going to catch you before the meeting.
I see.
I apologize for that. David, welcome aboard. You're a suggested committee member. The others may change, but, you know, some were carryovers from the past or of the similar position, or we like to rotate it around, but have, you know, principal representation from different places. But, you know, so you're not locked in here. Now, if you say, hey, I'm good, you know, the board member's here, you'd be locked in. But happy to answer questions. Otherwise, what we're approving, the action is to approve a temporary school board committee that would really run from now or August 5th through November 11th with the purpose of giving that constructive feedback primarily on district communications, and, you know, we've got a website out and running and all those kind of things to really be a, you know, a voice for the community or, you know, make sure we're, make sure we're connecting well, make sure information is clear. And I would add, there's also certainly room for a student school board member to, if one of you would, just let me know.
Can we meet on November 1?
Great question. I did not set this up. I probably moved that one to November 12th, because that's, that's the statement.
Good catch.
Very good catch.
Well, it's a calendar thing.
Dr. Redmond, one quick question. Will this include chopping points, you know, for purposes of being consistent? If the school board members ask questions, right, and obviously, with statements or in terms of his position, but in terms of that communication consistency, is it fair to say that you'll have kind of a one pager?
Certainly, I think that's something our communications department has worked with for the number of folks to be able to share answers. And also, I think in concert with our community engagement, you know, our school work group that's out in public, and want to make sure that, as always with anything that, any type of school district business that we're doing, that we're able to communicate well and ask questions, or at a minimum, correct people to really give sources of information. So, yeah, similar to what we, we had this committee last year for, you know, the capital projects levy renewal, and, you know, and I think it was very helpful. I think that's where we did some, I think we moved on some post-practice elevator speeches about, not, not, not wrong on that. I actually remember yours, Bill. Yeah, it was good.
I don't know if that's good or not.
No, it was good. I said it was good, just kidding. I think, oh, I'll leave him with that hanging, so. That's why I don't give hell about this. Because of activity, activity?
Just in case.
Just okay.
Well, this seems like a constructive conversation, so I'll make a motion to approve a temporary constructive feedback.
I will send. A motion by Brophy and a second by Aldrich. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Amber, can you please do the roll?
Sidik.
Yes.
Valdez. Yeah. Peterson.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes.
Aldrich.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Brophy.
Yeah. Motion carries. Next on our agenda is item 10.6. This is a resolution for approving Mike Redmond as the IOWA, and that stands for Identified Official With Authority. And so if you look at the document here, I read it earlier, this basically identifies Dr. Redmond as the principal point of contact for approving permissions for all things related to Minnesota Department of Education website and systems. And so they recommend that one person in the district be that authority, and so, and this is just a continuation of something you've already been doing, right?
It is, yes. And I, and we've, we've tried to do it in our organizational meeting in January, and we did it there. What we run into is, there's kind of conflicting language, and it talks about, hey, you need one for the next school year, so rather than have the risk, well, did what we applied in January, was that for the calendar? So I think in the future, we're going to look to do this in June or July and probably remove it from the organization meeting. But yes, I, typically, the superintendent is the Iowa, you know, for a school district. We do have a designated who does a ton of support work, and Allison Johnson from our learning, teaching, and equity department, who does a lot of the renewals, and this is, we're really giving access to our employees, to the MDE, all the different things that we do there in terms of approvals and legal requirements and budget approvals and everybody's different areas. So, yep, this is, you know, right now, I'm the Iowa today, and, yeah, and like I said, that's almost school districts.
I'll make a motion to approve Dr. Redmond as the Iowa for our school district. Second. So a motion by Smith and a second by Aldrich. Any further discussion? Seeing none, this is a resolution. Amber, can you please do the roll?
Sidik.
Yes.
Valdez. Yeah. Peterson.
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Aldrich?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Brophy?
Yeah. Resolution passes. That concludes the action items for tonight. Next is an information item, item 11.1, seeking community direction, and Dr. Redmond will present.
Do you want me to try?
Yeah, if you want.
Okay, absolutely, yeah.
I forgot to tell you once.
Yeah, that's all right.
You're pretty darn good. Want to, you know, as we've, as we've gone through this process, looking at what has now resulted in having a two-question operating levy on the November 4th ballot, we've shared a lot of information along the way. The board's asked a lot of questions. We've worked through some things. This is kind of a summary presentation of that work, and where we are and how we're, you know, planning to move forward between now and November 4th, 2025, and then beyond in terms of our budget shortfalls. Oh, you go back.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah. That was a long preamble, that's what I mean. But really, what the school board and then, you know, by extension, district leadership, we're seeking direction, you know, from our community, and, you know, we've got budget shortfalls facing us for the '26, '27 school year and the '27, '28 school year. And on June 23rd, and then again this evening in a, in a more formal way in terms of the election itself and the ballot language, the school board has unanimously approved placing a two-question operating levy on the November 4th ballot. If the levy is approved by the voters, the district will continue to provide similar levels of services moving forward. If the levy is not approved by the voters, the school district will need to make budget cuts to programming, services, and staffing, which will result, you know, in larger class sizes, and just, again, trying to, you know, begin to give details in terms of clarity. The why, we've shared this many, many times, but the main reason why Shock, like lots of other school districts across Minnesota, are facing these budget shortfalls, is the state's primary means of funding schools, which is via the general education formula allowance, or sometimes called the per pupil formula. That has fallen short of the rate of inflation over the past four years especially. And this diagram really shows the relationship between this type of funding, the, you know, state funding via the general education formula allowance, and what it would be if that, you know, formula allowance had kept pace with inflation. What we've been receiving is the orange dotted line, and then above it is the blue line, which had that formula kept pace with the rate of inflation, we would be receiving. And if you notice, the gap between the two lines was relatively consistent, and then you get to the last four years, and you will notice that the blue line, the rate of inflation, is even further separated from that orange dotted line. In other words, the gap between those two things is widening, and that gap, when we talk about the growth of the gap, not the entire gap itself, that gap grew by $755 per pupil in annual funding, you know, that had state funding, this general allowance formula kept pace with the rate of inflation, Shock, the public schools, you know, would have $755 per pupil more funding. The gap grew from $609 to $1,364, and then it, you know, on the bottom, we take that gap, just the growth in the gap, not the entire gap, but the growth in the gap over the last four years, that $755, if we carry that out, we would be receiving had, had our general formula allowance just kept pace with the rate of inflation in the last four years, just the growth in the gap, we would be receiving $6.3 million more in annual revenue in terms of state funding. And this chart we've seen, this shows, you know, this is, you know, shows you what that inflation was, and you can see where it really begins to take off. It's at 4.2% in April of 2021, and you can see what's happened over the past, you know, that's the inflation of the past four school years. The second why, to carry this why out, another reason why Shock, and again, like many other school districts in Minnesota, have these budget shortfalls, is that state funding has decreased also due to declining student enrollments, caused mainly by lower birth rates. And if we carry that out here, you can see in terms of funding from the state, that decrease over the last, you know, from fiscal '21, the 2021 school year through the '24, '25 school year, you can see that decrease in state funding is 8.2 million. I do want to point out the note on the bottom, you know, our school district has made staffing adjustments and other adjustments every year due to declining enrollment. Our state's funding system, and we heard Representative Baker, he wasn't talking about this specific part of it, but it's incredibly complex, and there are different parts of it. It, it does accommodate, you know, it's driven by enrollment. It doesn't work as well as it should when districts are facing declining enrollment. Works much better with increasing enrollment, but we have been doing some things to, to adapt and adjust each and every year over this period as well. Key data, not going to, not going to go deep into these, I believe most of this we've seen, just trying to put some of the data pieces. You've heard me talk about other districts in the state, other districts in our area last year, this coming school year, making significant budget cuts. And then comparing, you know, if we take additional revenue in the form of operating levy revenue and QCOM levy, and compare that to the districts that we compare ourselves to for, you know, all kinds of things, our comparables, these other 11 districts, you can see where, when it comes to QCOM revenue and operating levy, where we are. We're in that light blue line, and so you've got some data there, and we've obviously been, been over that a number of times. This anchor spreadsheet, a lot of information, talks about the revenues we've been receiving over time, revenue projections out over, you know, through '28, also the expenditure side, and so, you know, so you want to take a look at where our revenue comes from, how that is, has, you know, progressed over time, and then where we've been spending our money. There's a lot of details there. And then each of these slides, we'll break those down further. And then, you know, question people ask, well, where do you spend your money? You know, I know Bill Manazi has this same graphic in our, you know, annual budget and, you know, budget projections, but we're a service organization, and at heart, we spend our money on people who serve, you know, our students, but we also, you know, serve via community and other things, really, our community from, you know, the beginning of life through the end of life. But, you know, as a service organization, we pay salary and benefits to people. Our teachers make up about 60% roughly of that, all general fund expenditures. People, when you take the other folks, make up about 80%, and, you know, some of those are, you know, in addition, we've got some contracted services and things, but that's just a graphic design, because that's a question that gets asked a lot, where do you spend your money? Well, we spend it on people who provide much of the lab services, primarily to our students in our community. And then, you know, the title of this, seeking community direction, very purposeful, you know, via that operating levy on November 4th, the voice of our community will be heard. As a school district, and very unlike other, other levels of local government, we're the only one that has to go to the voters in the state of Minnesota. City government doesn't have to go to the voters with any form of operating levy, county governments, township governments, public school districts. We're the only form of local government that really, our only viable option for increasing revenue is to go to the voters and ask them to approve an operating levy like we have on the ballot on November 4th. And then there's really three options, you know, for us, when our budget is imbalanced, it's those three, three numbers on the bottom, budget cuts, increased revenues, or a combination of both of those, and we're really looking at path three, and I'll get into kind of the specifics of that in a little bit. We're projecting a $7 to $9 million budget deficit for the '26, '27 school year. We've begun to do some work on that, and even, and I've shared this at past meetings, you know, there's, there's some hiring that we were planning to do this year, but looking at the, the financial projections for the future, it seemed prudent not to do that. There's some other things. And the other piece, when we get into this, you know, the puzzle, the $7 to $9 million budget deficit, we're planning to make $3 million in permanent expenditure reductions, like we always do, you know, if enrollment's declining, we do some adjustments due to enrollment. And again, want to be really clear that we are not changing class size targets, but if you have fewer students, we do then have fewer people serving them. Reducing the total quantity of bus routes, again, not, not shortening or lengthening walking distances, but if we have fewer students, we then typically, we have fewer bus routes. And, you know, and then some other pieces of that, that we're really looking in terms of where, where is our district, how are we aligned in terms of state funding, in terms of the services, and where have we made kind of automatic adjustments, if you will, over the last four years, and where have those adjustments not, not been done, not because they're not automatic, and that we need to do some, some work there in terms of aligning our revenues and expenditure better. You know, if we, oh, no, you, yeah, if you talk about increased revenue. You know, if you talk about increased revenues, which would be part of that picture, if we make $3 million in budget cuts, we have an opportunity via the operating levy for a tax-neutral operating levy. We have a $5.6 million tax decrease, which occurs in calendar year '26 due to construction debt being paid in full in calendar year '25. So at the end of the calendar year '25, the $5.6 million would come off the taxpayer rolls, if you will, for calendar year '26. If question one of an operating levy were to be approved by the voters this November, it would generate $5 million in new revenue by shifting the community taxes from paying for the construction debt that it was paying for, that people were paying for in 2025, to now paying for operating expenditures in 2026. And then, looking at this same shift in the form of taxes from calendar year '25 to calendar year '26, trying to say it a couple of different ways, in calendar year 2025, Shakopee Public Schools will be paying $5.16 million in taxes to pay out part of our district's construction debt. If approved by the voters, question one of the operating levy will provide $5 million, a little over $5 million in new revenue in 2026 to the district, which is also paid for by the taxpayers. Stated another way, taxes paid in '25 for construction debt equal $5.16 million. And they're being replaced by, if the voters approve, question one of the operating levy, taxes paid for that additional operating levy in 2026 of just a shade over $5 million. And you'll notice the note on the bottom of this, you'll go, well, why are the numbers different? The $5.16 million and the basically $5 million? Well, they're two different forms of taxation. Construction debt is paid via something called net tax capacity. Operating levies are paid via referendum market value. Those charge different tax rates for different property types. And so the replacement is not exactly one-to-one. And that's why the amount coming off is actually above $160,000 more than the amount that would be shifted or added in 2026. This is a graph we've looked at. This shows our debt schedule for our construction debt in our school district, and shows that construction debt coming off. It's also now, and I applaud Bill Menazi in our finance department, done a lot of work to give us an easily understandable schedule. But also, over the last few years, just like a lot of homeowners have done, we've, what do we call that word? It's a reword, refinanced our school's construction debt and got lower interest rates. And it said that, again, the district didn't get any, we didn't get any direct money. We didn't get any money at all from doing that. But well, over $8 million then in taxpayer savings due to the refinancing of our construction loans or our construction debt. And also, we have a very well-organized debt schedule now, which did not exist seven years ago. The debt schedule existed, it was just horribly organized seven years ago, to be clear. This, going into detail, this was on the resolutions approved earlier this evening. But going through that, showing the different categories of tax, residential, homestead, commercial, industrial, apartments, agricultural, homestead, that you get the question one, you get the expiring debt, and then compared to the new voter-approved debt for question one. And you can see that sum total. And almost all of those numbers in that far-right column are negative. I think it's important to say, because of the shift from net tax capacity to referendum market value, you'll notice that all the numbers for commercial, industrial, and agricultural, homestead are negative, meaning less taxes, with the operating levy and with the previous construction debt. And then if we go to the what-if, going back to that diagram of additional revenue comparison between the 11 other school districts that we compare ourselves to, we've added the $620 per pupil, or the slightly over $5 million in operating levy revenue onto this diagram. And you can see where that puts us in comparison to those districts. Certainly improves our standing in terms of the difference between us and some of the other districts at the top, and moves us up a little bit, one more notch from the bottom. And then if question two, separating that out, that's the $310 per pupil. The, kind of the way this is explained would be going to the cap. There's a maximum in the state of Minnesota for public school districts, so the school district can ask of its voters in terms of operating levy revenues. This would be moving Shakopee to that maximum. To Joe's question earlier, question two can only be approved by the voters if question one is approved. So if question one is not approved by the voters, the vote totals on question two do not matter. Question two is absolutely contingent on question one being passed before question two can be considered for approval. And it's asking, question two is asking for an additional $310 per pupil in operating levy on top of question one. And that would bring Shakopee Public Schools to the cap. It would provide an additional $2.5 million in annual operating revenue. And then here are the tax tables for question two. If question two were approved by the voters, going to the cap. I think Bill mentioned, that would add an additional $8.71 per month onto the taxes for the owner of a $400,000 home. One of the things, we talk about a lot of numbers when we do this. And a lot of times, people, we talk about the $310 per pupil. And sometimes people go, well, that's my taxes. No, that is not. That is the per pupil amount for the operating levy. Your taxes, the $400,000 house, would be $105 annually, or $8.71 per month. And so you'll see that diagram that we've used in the past to help explain that. Illuminates the question two. An owner of a $400,000 home would pay $8.71 more per month. The district, the total that would be generated would be $2.5 million annually for operating expenses. And then we do another what-if with those comparable districts. I'm the only one not receiving revenue from QCOM. And again, on these diagrams, to make it an apples-to-apples comparison, we've given each of the 12 school districts the exact same student enrollment as Shakopee Public Schools, so that we could, we're only comparing really one item, and that's that additional revenue. And we don't have to calculate enrollment differences in our head or on paper. So that's just for comparison purposes. And then you get to this total diagram. If you bring that all together on the right side, you've got question one, you've got construction debt dropping off, you've got a shift to paying operating levy cost. Question two, you've got additional operating levy cost. And then you can see that total net taxpayer result monthly or in the column on the right, where if you add that together, and that is where you will see. And this is one, Bill, I just noticed this today. There was a carryover at the $400,000 house on question one, that it had to have been somewhere less than 12 cents a year. And the math, when we carried it out to the cents place, added a penny per month. So it's $8.72 per month for that $400,000 home. First time I noticed that was late this afternoon, going through this. Again, I've been through it multiple times, and I would have sworn that was all zeros when I looked at it earlier.
Shakopee, that guy is probably between $6 and $10.
That was what I did this afternoon, Joe. That brightens me a little bit. This is the financial summary put out by PMA, who does this kind of work for us, this kind of gets some tax rate stuff on top. And it's the same data that we've shown in previous slides. And then ultimately, again, seeking community direction via the community voting on the two-question operating levy on November 4th. And I thought, I actually thought of this slide, Shania, when you were asking your question earlier. Because this is meant to be sort of a timeline, or moving left to right here. What is happening? Because all of a sudden, there's numbers, there's question one, there's tax again. And if we look at it, our plan is to make $3 million in permanent budget cuts for the '26, '27 school year. And then you've got an arrow, and now there's a choice. And this would be part of that community direction forward. Either we have to make an additional $5 million in budget cuts for the '26, '27 school year. So $3 million plus $5 million, a total of $8 million. Or if the operating levy is approved by the voters, we would receive $5 million in new revenue. And so then it would be the $3 million in budget cuts, but we would have $5 million in new revenue. And then you've got an arrow, moving on to the '27, '28 school year. Our projection again is for decreases in enrollment. We expect to make those enrollment-type cuts of about $0.5 million that year. And then you've got question two, which again, is that either-or type choice, where it's either another $2.5 million in budget cuts, or we, question two would generate $2.5 million in operating levy revenue. And then, this is what I just said, but kind of maybe a little bit more detail, but trying to get the idea that there's some pieces, there's some things that happen no matter what for $3 million in budget cuts. We've got to, if our enrollment projections are correct, we've got to make the budget balance in the '26, '27 school year. Again, need to do some of that in '27, '28 school year. And then it's the choice of, I was saying, $5 million more in budget cuts in the '26, '27 school year, and $2.5 million more in the '27, '28 school year. Or if the voters approve the operating levy for the questions, then we would have $7.5 million in operating revenue. And then we go back to that same flow chart on the next slide. Just trying to kind of give the detail and come back to it. And then we've got some forums coming up, public community forums, September 16th and October 23rd, both starting at 6 o'clock in the, we run the rest stage of the high school. Yeah, wanted to go into some of those details that we've been through. Again, kind of grounding, moving forward, really beginning to share information that's important in terms of our partnership with our community, and also in terms of seeking their direction. So happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Terrick, Dr. Rimmer, just for clarification purposes, you've mentioned the referendum market value and the tax statements presented. But that's data as of current state, correct? So conceptually, that referendum market value can increase over time just based on those projected calls. In other words, the per pupil amount would be divided by a bigger denominator, assuming referendum market value increases. Is that a fair statement?
It is. And when we do this in terms of public schools and operating levies and financial projections, we use a fixed set of statistics. And so we treat in our district our referendum market value based on what it is. In our community, even though that has typically grown over time, and I think it's a reasonable expectation, the referendum market value might increase over the next whatever number of years. We don't get to project that out and go, well, the referendum market value in fiscal '27 will be this. We take it as it currently is and base our projections on that.
Basically, the moment one new house is built, I mean, one house is created. And it might decrease fractions of a penny.
Well, that's the tax basis in general, right? Including businesses and anything else that comes in.
Yes.
Be increased. In fact, we did this four years ago. Don't want to speak out of turn, but the impact to the taxpayers from the last levy is now less than was projected there.
For multiple reasons.
Yeah.
Less students.
Go ahead.
Sorry.
No, go ahead.
Less students, more property.
Because we base that levy on student enrollment, and then, and our total referendum market value as a school district community has increased over that time. So assuming that your value of your home stayed exactly constant comparison to all the other values, yes, your portion of that would be less than we would have stated it was going to be when we did the previous levy.
In fact, we've had the city come in and give us quite a few proposals over the timeframe here, showing that our city's planning to grow pretty substantially. Maybe not so much single-family homes adding to our enrollment issues, but definitely helping in this market, exactly, in this tax basis.
And the one thing that helps with market value, a strong school district. Bill, since this is one of your last meetings, what's my favorite thing about America?
That's right. And people have the options to go. I've asked him so many times, I just wanted one more chance. You know, people have options to go to any school district, or live in any city around here, that work around here. And if you have a strong school district, that means that people are going to want to live here. And that means property values are going to be increased. So my elevator speech is right there. I'd rather pay a little bit more in property taxes, so that value of my house keeps increasing.
Any other questions for each other or me?
Well, I hate to be the guy that has to say that something that you said is misleading. But, yeah, when you say that, see if I can find it, I think it's this one, where you said the refinancing has saved taxpayers over $8 million since 2021. It's $8 million from 2021 to 2035.
Yes.
Yes, it's not since 2021, it's between 2021 and 2035.
I don't think I said since '21. I did, I misspoke.
Hey, I can just read it here, it says since '21.
But in the refinancing process, over the life of the loans?
Yes.
A total of somewhere about $8.5 million.
And one more.
Yep.
So inflation versus the increase in spending per year. Inflation's like 5.3% a year over the last four years, spending 5.67%. We're not out of line with inflation. If anybody thinks, well, you're just spending a ton of money, more than you should be. I mean, that's an IRD, but I'm not going to make it. But based on inflation, it's reasonable.
Thank you, Dr. Rimmer. Next, our agenda is item 12, committee reports and other information. I will start by just bringing up the superintendent evaluation. We still have one outstanding, and we will not name anybody because it's anonymous, so we don't know exactly what it is anyway. But we have one outstanding, one person has not done theirs. So this is a friendly reminder to please do your superintendent evaluation. And if you have any questions, let me know, and we'll put you in touch with Keith or somebody. That's all I have. With Summer, this is my first time back in a while, so I have no school district involvement for a little bit. Kristy, we'll go to you next, because we can't see you right now, and I don't want to forget about you. So we'll go to you next. Hopefully, you can hear us, and we can hear you.
Yep, I can hear you just fine, I can see you guys too. I don't have a whole lot. I'm actually at a Minnesota State High School League meeting, which is why I could not be in attendance tonight in person. And we have a board meeting tomorrow morning, so that kind of is a kickoff for our new year with new board members coming on, et cetera. So it's doing a lot of planning for the upcoming school year in regards to our sports and activities through the State High School League. We have negotiations starting again tomorrow afternoon. We had a Southwest Metro board meeting on July 15th, where we approved handbooks for our staff as well. And then also, we completed our superintendent evaluation for Dr. Horton, which was very sensitive. which was very satisfactory by the board. And then on June 26th and 27th, which seems like an eternity ago, I had the opportunity to attend the COSBA School Safety Symposium, and I'm not going to go into a lot of detail about that. I think I'll share more at our upcoming board retreat or development that we have here in a couple of weeks, but it was very, very good. A lot of heavy topics, but I'll share a few more things at that time, just to keep my remarks short tonight.
All right, thank you, Kristy. Go with Nick next?
Well, I think, like you, I haven't had a lot since, was it June 25th? I know we had our policy meeting beforehand here, and we've got some pretty good, healthy conversations going on, some of our policies, and I guess one thing that I was just going to ask and we don't have to be answered at all, at all today, but I remember in a previous meeting, we were talking about the survey that was sent out, and we got the statistical results, but not any of the actual information on some action items that were coming up. Was that still something we were going to address at one of the future meetings, or is that something that's done at, like, the retreat that you just did?
You're talking the community conversation, that's on the board development agenda for August 11th.
But that's all, yeah, that's all that was those.
Thank you, Caroline.
No reports about the community engagement coming next Monday.
Joe?
Absolutely.
All right, thanks, Chad.
Yeah, pretty quick for me, too. We have policy today, so that'll be coming through soon, just regular policy reviews. Again, obviously, everyone's serene enough of themselves, but there's not, there's no major changes. Yeah, and then it looks like I'm likely going to miss community engagement next Monday. I guess I'm going to be next to a lake. I'm going to be fishing a month, so I might, I'll be listening and maybe I'll delay it.
Tim?
Also, policy committee, Nick and I are going to rewrite the absence. Maybe that's telling the assembly conversation, just in terms of how the current policy is written versus our new reality. It's a little bit of a ruddy, but we already have a really good conversation specifically about attendance and absences and how we chat those. And then, of course, if you were to miss, if I didn't mention, another amazing Shockley public bike season has commenced. It would be great if Mother Nature would turn the temperature down just a little bit. I think I'm losing weight every time I go to practice. Not necessarily a bad thing, but it's looking forward to a great season. We're going to have five consecutive races in a row, just how the schedule worked out this year, so more to come.
Shawna?
This is my first board meeting in a while. I would have to say I missed Michelle, but it was cool. Yeah, I was on the policy committee meeting before, and it was good, like, it was a normal meeting.
Anything to report from DC that you want to put out?
DC was absolutely amazing, the guys. Yeah, I, so like results-wise, I ended up coming sixth globally, which is obviously really cool.
That's, that's very good, yeah.
The sad thing is, the sad thing is because of all the funding that history is going right now, in the past, they would have awards for all the top 10 finalists, but this year they couldn't have just sponsored everything that was on the table. But Minnesota, so it was a second year, and keeping up the program that was a factor to a bunch of its sponsorship, and fundraising events, that's Summer, so that was really cool. And people like teaching, as, I mean, teaching researchers and professors, and then to work their research, my pitching on the research. Yeah, Summer's been cool. I have a cool job at Scott County Public Health Department right now, so seeing parallels with how almost every bureaucracy and what is going with their policies that is going appropriately to the things I've experienced and things you're working on, this Shockley Public Schools has been really interesting. Yeah, no updates necessarily from the rest of the school. I'm excited to hear it.
Sixth overall, that's really cool, yeah. I'm actually sixth in my neighborhood, I think.
Yeah, it's technically a very much, you have the most representation from the US, obviously, like, for example, Moncat, we have two kids from Minnesota, and then two kids from every state in the US. But then, like, the kids that we, they were from China, and the one kid was from Sweden, and it's, and it was the best thing I've ever seen in my life. So, yeah, we have a little representation.
Brian, first of all, welcome up.
Thank you. I don't really have much to say right now, but this whole meeting was a really good educational experience for me since my first meeting, just to see how meetings usually go than what usually comes before it, and I'm excited to see how this journey will take me. And, yeah.
Really awesome. I mean, I'd be here. Amber, anything?
Nothing else from me tonight.
Jim?
Yeah, we're, we're rolling. A lot of things coming up, big ones, we actually have our annual meeting with Scott County on attendance. They bring social services, they bring their legal team, and we make sure that we're aligned, that our actions are what they want, just a lot of great mutual support between the two agencies. And I know Madeline, our attendance specialist, will be speaking at a state conference later this week, talking about some of the work that we're doing around attendance. And then we kick off AMSD this Friday morning at 7:30 in Moncat, I'm looking forward to that. Some folks from Good Trouble that we've worked with, Shawna, will be the guest speakers, and so I'll start, start my year there, and it'll be nice to see, to see Julie again, so.
Dr. Ruben?
Yeah, want to share something that Tiffany and I are coordinating on behalf of the board and really the board agenda walkthrough with Chair Smith and Vice Chair Peterson. We've talked a number of times about that, school board self-assessment, and Kristy did a lot of light work. It's one of those where you, you know, this will be a little bit of how quickly time flies. We think the last time it was done was 2020. I would have sworn it was done after that, but whether, whether it was or not, we found the 2020 MSBA ones.
I feel like we did one.
I feel like we did something, too, and I don't know if it was the same, but we, we're going to recreate, we've actually put it into Google, Google responses, Google forums for the board members. Tiffany and I will send that out to you tomorrow. It is the exact same questions that we, we actually had somebody from MSBA come in and do it in 2020, and I think there's like 32 questions, for some reason, on the data we had and the questions that were done. It's missing like question 12 and 13, so I don't know if we elected not to do those, so you will notice that. That is, we just, we replicated the exact questions and skipped the two that we did not have data previously from. But it'd be a good discussion item if we're going to send that out tomorrow. Want you to hopefully turn that around by Friday, give, you know, time to compile that, put it in a forum, so that it can be a discussion on, on August 11th. I think it's a pretty quick, you know, pretty quick survey. I know it's the end of the month, but thought that that would, would help us in terms of, in addition to the performance measures that are part of superintendent school board evaluation, and I have the school board specific, and it really looks like there's a lot of good questions for discussion. So you'll be getting an email from either Tiffany or I tomorrow with a link to that. Brian, you're off the hook for a year. Shawna, we're going to bring you in, too, I think you've got perspective on that, and so we'll get feedback from eight folks, and use that as part of our discussion on the 11th.
Great. Thank you. Next, our agenda is item 13, upcoming meetings and important dates. So Amber, if you want to bring those up, I don't know if there's anything specific you want to call attention to on the list here. Otherwise, we can, you, there's several links there you can follow to look for upcoming things. August 5th, 1990, you can look there this morning. Wait for it. With that, I would entertain a motion with jurors. So move. Motion by Brophy?
Second.
And second by Johnson. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Amber, could you please do the roll?
Cinnick?
Yes.
Valdez?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Aldrich?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Brophy?
Yes.
Any other?
Of that.